I could write it down.
Yes, I just said. I said right now. I know. Here, I'm gonna steal a little bit.
Oh, you did it.
Good. How are you doing?
Very well.
He takes this with him.
We have twenty-four hour time. Give peace over there. What time is it?
It's six.
Actually, six o'clock exactly. Actually, my phone's at six.
That's nice. Well, I haven't even tested the monitor.
Oh, like six oh one.
Yeah, that'll be around. Happens.
Ah, yeah, my phone eighteen P's and C's.
It's taking a bottle.
Is that a hint? So that's amazing.
I was just showing him Brad.
Point six, okay. I guess we should be very sorry here.
Oh, on me. So on me, that's. On what? Or he's, I think it's on that. Is he on that?
No.
That's.
Okay. All right. We will call this March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three City Council meeting to order in six oh one due to our changing the clock to catch up with daylight savings. All right, Madam Clerk, if you could call the world, please.
Councilmember Anzalotti?
Here.
Councilmember Oshel?
Here.
Councilmember Best? Councilmember Tudor?
Here.
Mayor Carrington?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moline?
And I believe Deputy Mayor Moline is out sick. She called in and Councilman Best was talking about calling in.
On Zoom.
On Zoom, so.
Okay, then. Councilmember Alcántara?
Here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
First supplemental order, I know how it works.
All right. And I just want to note, we've got audience participation, number one, and number two, sign up sheets over there. You know, with all the activity we had last time, we decided to get a little more organized. But Councilman Alcántara, if I could have you lead us in the place. Say.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with a vision and justice for all.
All right. We have the approval of the agenda. Thanks to wishes of the council.
Would you prefer?
Second.
Let the clerk figure that out. All right, is there any changes, modifications for the agenda approval minutes? Should we just go ahead and accept those as approved? Okay. But it says this. All right, next we have communications and appearance. Polly Beth Odom, Executive Director for Daybreak Inc. Did you get your microphone on?
It should be on.
Hopefully, that light's on. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Hold it for a few seconds.
Turns itself off.
There's a button on the bottom.
Oh, there we go.
Just hold it.
The red light was on a second ago.
Oh, it might have been on.
Okay. It's working.
Okay. Welcome.
Thank you very much. My name's Polly Beth Odom. I'm the Executive Director of Daybreak Incorporated. And I am here, and I also have my my cohort in crime over there, Sherry Carrington. I'm here to talk today to the council about an event that we held on February sixteenth, which we call the Palmer Community Resource Day. And this came out of the community council meeting that were the Palmer Council meeting that was held in October at the Borough Building where there were some questions about vagrancy and what we could do about vagrancy. And I was one of the people who spoke up and said, we're here and we'd be happy to help. So I contacted several of my fellow agencies in the community, and we had sixteen agencies participate in the first of what I hope are many Palmer Community Resource Days. We had seven agencies in Palmer. These agencies provide mental health services, substance abuse disorder treatment, and resource connection. We had two agencies that contacted us from the state of Alaska. One was the Department of Vocational Rehabilitation. And a second agency that got in touch with us was the Senior Ombudsman for Senior Disability Services. We also had six agencies from Wasilla that came over to the event as well. We were able to see forty people that came through the door. And just to be in comparison, the Homeless Connect that happened in Wasilla two weeks before had approximately seventy-five people come in. So I feel that our turnout for a very first event was was very strong. I am hopeful that in the future we can hold this event again. I think it was well received by the agencies. It gave the agencies themselves a chance to collaborate and talk a little bit more when sometimes we don't get that opportunity to do so. I made it point to reach out to the Matsu Borough School District and talk with their administrators to make sure that we could get nurses and counselors over because sometimes they're the best person to help share the information. I think in the future we could do a little bit better in advertising and also connecting with community churches because I don't think it's just something agencies can do. I think that to help with this problem, we need to be working with our churches and with community leadership to help meet the needs of Palmer. I think we also have to be aware of a potential tsunami tsunami of social determinants of health that could happen in the next two months. We have obviously the delay in SNAP benefits that are happening through the Division of Public Assistance. But with that also, there is going to be a recertification of Medicaid for a lot of individuals who qualified for Medicaid during COVID are going to have their applications looked at again. And so there could be people who also start to lose healthcare benefits, which could bring a bigger problem to Palmer. So I think it's something we need to have on our radar and need to be working on. But we are an agency committed to making Palmer a better and great place to live, and we'd be proud to be part of the conversation.
Does anyone in the council have any questions? We'll call you. Councilman Alcántara?
Hey, thank you so much for being here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really appreciated the event, the Cedar, you know, the students who were over there for a while. And and it was, I think, what we received. I really appreciated the amount of agencies and things you were able to get to attend. And like you said, I think with more, you know, we had to change the dates, obviously, because of weather and different things, or more outreach, we'll be able to. And a lot of these things you have to do two, three, four times before you start being a critical mass of people that say, oh, I wish I would have been there for that. One of the other things, I serve as a board chair for Palmer Church of God, and we have our food bank there across from the fairgrounds. And I don't think our pastor really knew about it, and I'm taken waiting for that. But it's just the things where I think it has to be an annual event so we can continue to build. So thank you for your work on that.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Any questions? I think Polly Beth probably is thinking sooner than an annual event, so.
Yeah, I would, I mean, if I had my my will, I would love to be able to host something in September after school starts. And then, again, sometime in February or March, we tend to start. We also do the Housing Assistance Program at Daybreak, and we've just been having an onslaught of people calling, asking for utility assistance. And it usually tends to ramp up in about January, February that those come in. So if we could kind of tie it to when we know it's kind of a critical need, I think we'd be able to reach out to even more people and be beneficial.
Polly, thank you very much. Next, we have a proclamation. It's kind of a lack of a tradition. I don't remember how many years the rabbi has become and received his proclamation. Although I should trust me the class.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. So this is a proclamation honoring Education and Sharing Day, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas the basis for continuity of any society is education. And in the great city of Palmer, the education of our youth is a priority. And whereas in order to achieve its highest goals, education must not only impart knowledge, but also teach the students how to live, forming and strengthening their moral character to make a better life for themselves as individuals and for society as a whole, imparting moral and ethical values that have been the bedrock of society since the dawn of civilization, including the values known as the Seven Noah. What I, Noah High Laws. And whereas the educational system must also focus on building character by emphasizing the cultivation of universal moral and ethical values that have been the bedrock of society from the dawn of civilization, including the values of. Did I just read that? Oh, no. Including the values known as the Seven Noah High Laws. And whereas a global spiritual leader and leading advocate for the advancement of education, the Rebe Rabbi Menachem Schneersen, stressed that a moral and ethical education empowers every individual to develop their full potential in making the world a better place. There's a lot of whereas. And whereas such an education can nurture the unity of diverse peoples through the encouraging increased acts of goodness and kindness imbued with the awareness that even a single positive act of an individual can change the world and usher in an era of global peace when there will be peace within your walls, serenity within your mansions. Psalm one twenty-two. And whereas Education and Sharing Day is observed each year on the Rebe's birthday in recognition of his outstanding and lasting contributions toward the improvement of education, morality, and the acts of charity around the world, a day to pause and reflect on our responsibility to ensure our youth have the foundation necessary to lead lives rich in purpose and fulfillment, through service and good works. And whereas April second, two thousand twenty-three, will mark one hundred and twenty-one years since the Rebe's birth, capping a year in which thousands of new institutions and initiatives were launched throughout the world in tribute to this celebration. And whereas this year has added significance as the year of Hallel?
Hakkel.
Hakkel. A biblical event of unity, education, and spiritual growth emphasizing how every person is crucial to perfecting the world. Now, therefore, I, Steve Carrington, Mayor of Palmer, do hereby proclaim Sunday, April second, two thousand twenty-three, to the Education and Sharing Day in the city of Palmer, and call upon everyone to work together to create a better a better world, I guess. In witness thereof, I here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Palmer to be fixed on this fourteenth day of March, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you very much.
So, man, like, how does that status compare to, like, one of the Ten Commandments tablets?
Pretty holy, brother.
You bought gifts?
Yep, it is. Again. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. And thank you for proclaiming April second as Education and Sharing Day. April, April second, April second corresponds to the eleventh day of Hebrew month of Nisan, the one hundred and twenty-first birthday, as you just heard, of the greatest Jewish leader, the Moses of our time, the Rebe Rabbi Menachem Schneersen. Education and Sharing Day emphasizes the importance of paying attention, not only to academic education and preparation for a career, but also education of morality and ethics, to raise children to adults who have proper foundations and can utilize academic knowledge and their career to make the right choices and help make the world a better place. The Rebe stresses the importance of every child having their own charity bucks. Every time they earn a earn pocket money or allowance, parents teach their children to give small portions of it to charity. For just as charity does a great deal for the person in need physically, charity does a great deal for the giver mentally, psychologically, emotionally, and spiritually. Giving charity every day is like the daily exercise. The more we move our kindness muscles, the more we reveal the inherent selfless goodness that we all have inside us. The earlier we educate our children with this behavior, the more this will become a part of who they are, to live a life day by day with virtues of kindness and goodness. Therefore, I have with me today these momentos, the ark. And I know last year many of you got them, but I brought them again just in case maybe you lost them or maybe to give them to someone else in your family or loved one that can make a use out of it. These charity boxes for whomever would like to incorporate this in their daily schedule, to give every day at least one coin to charity. The Rebe also stresses the very, very strongly the importance and place of parents in the education of their children, not only to worry for their physical and safety and security, but also their spiritual, emotional, and psychological well-being. Parents, we have, we are encouraged to have meaningful conversations and dialogue with our children and to impart with them the values in a moral compass, values that are strong and enduring no matter what financial or social status they will attain in life. Values like kindness, like doing the right thing and not to back down because of social pressures, to make good choices and to stand strong even if it seems hard at times. Because there is an eye that sees and ear that hears, the creator of the universe, who watches over each one of us and gives us the strength and courage and hopes that we make the right decisions. Not so long ago, here in our public school system, they began to start the day with a quiet moment. This is a perfect opportunity to encourage parents to have meaningful conversations with their children about the above and other important values and to give our children food for thought so that when they come to schools, in addition to having physical food for their lunches and snacks, they also have spiritual, emotional, and meaningful food for their minds and hearts. By divine providence, this has been implemented in the one hundred and twentieth year of the Rebe, something that he is very passionate about, that us parents not forget our important, crucial role in our children's education. This year, as mentioned in a moment ago, is a special year on the Jewish calendar. In biblical times, once every seven years, all Jewish people are gathered together in Jerusalem, men, women, and children, to hear the reading of the five books of Moses by the king of the time, to be inspired and stay focused on their God-given purpose and mission here in this world. Parents inspire their children to be focused on the good and be focused and grounded on the values that really make us who we are as people, as a nation, and humanity as a whole. Judaism teaches that every good deed and every individual has the power to change the world for better. And every one of us adds increases in goodness and kindness, the world will become a perfect and good place, a home for the divine through the coming of Mosiah, Hosiah, speedily in our time. Thank you. And I'll give each one of you these arcs. And whoever else wants. Thank you. I'm not forgetting last week.
No.
Thank you.
Thanks.
It's a card about it. I'll be going for our friends also.
Yes.
There you go. There you go, Mr. Mayor. Oh, good. That was a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you. There you go. Thank you. You're for sure for last year.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Hopefully, for sure next year, but we'll see.
Exactly. All right, thank you very much.
All right, next we have manager's report. Mr. Manager.
Yes, good evening. Exactly one year from today or this week, we have the Arctic Winter Games coming to Matsu Borough. They have been working on this approximately for two years. Shortly, I believe, we will be receiving a request for use of our facilities for this and possibly a financial partnership. So just want you to be aware of that when that comes. We will bring that forward. We have nothing officially. I'd ask them to put any requests they have to us in writing so I can bring that to to you. So library, about five fifty, we got a signed copy. So we have a place for an interim library, what we're calling a storefront, where you can pick up books. Books will be available. Computers will be available for patrons, and we're really kind of beefing up the Wi-Fi. And that is going to be over on Arctic Avenue on the great northern engineering former facility owned by Briggs Family. So we think that's a good spot. Brad worked real hard with Beth to find that location. We think it's about as good as one as we can get in Palmer. We're very happy with it. And when this first started, we weren't sure if there's going to be any possibilities in our in our town. Also, too, we are probably, well, we are one attorney away from having agreement in the industrial park for a storage area for book repair and storage when we go through this process. So also, too, we are working on RFP, RFQ for architectural services. Whether we repair, rebuild, build new, we need that person on working with the city. It'll be quite a bit input with the city council and the public on this process. So we're going to advertise for that, send that out and begin that. And then that recommendation will come to city council so we can move forward on that. We're still waiting for insurance, what news we have as far as damage and how much we can collect. As a reminder, we have five million, but one hundred and twenty-five percent. We have probably six point five million available if they determine there's that much damage. And so there might be some discussion if we, you know, you know, it's kind of like your regular car. It's total, and they say, no, it's only five hundred dollars. We go through those processes all the time. So I'll keep you informed of that. We have been in touch and have submitted a request to Senator Murkowski. That closes on Friday. We've also been talking with House Co-Chair Delana Johnson about funding for that. We have submitted a letter of assistance for USDA, and Bestow is also looking for other funding. So with that, we are very hopeful that we can turn this this big lemon into lemonade and really kind of serve our next generation. So bad, but I'm pretty pretty excited about that possibility. Also, too, community cleanup. The Chamber is, saw how great of a job we did last year, and they were jealous, and they want to be part of it again. So they are working with our team and will be providing more details. I believe that's probably going to be the second Saturday in May. A lot depends on how much stick and snow is still around in May. If we wanted to melt slowly, but melt. So and and I had you a new updated sheet. So on here, this is your priorities. And as you talked about, we have the Palmer Public Library at the top that you approved that we're seeking money for. That last Tuesday night, the third one down, Bogart Road Water Main Extension Pressure Booster Station. We are receiving two point, two point two million for the Matsu Borough. They cover that entire cost. This is left over ARPA funds. So this is them reaching out to us. They didn't have to. They could use this money for anything they wanted to, and they chose to do this. It will help getting water to the colony schools. But also, too, they realized that they don't want to be in the water and sewer utility business. And so when we're selling water and sewer service outside our community, it benefits them. Also, too, if you go over to turn over to the next page, it is the fourth one down. It's Water Connection Services Palmer to Wasilla. Also, Tuesday night, Matsu Borough. I think it's one point nine million to do the engineering work on that. Now, this project can range from fourteen point nine million to thirty million, which means it's a big project, we have to go after it. But the Matsu Borough is giving a project for Wasilla and Palmer to do the engineering work on that. Wasilla has agreed to to run that through their books, that sort of thing, and work with us on that project. So that's, that was also ARPA money they could use for anything else. So in the in the last, last two items on the list, these were additions that city council had. There's two projects on pedestrian safety and access. And then there's a safe route to school from Cedar Hills to town. And right after that, our public works director put it on the capital list of DOT. We got word last week that DOT, the safe routes to schools from Cedar Hills to town, is taking that project, is going to complete that. Anything that's going to happen. And it's not only Cedar Hills, although the only one to keep people in Palmer is going all the way to Palmer Fish Oak. So that will be nice trail, safety for kids, because that is dangerous. And just amazed that they're picking it up and doing that. So it never ever occurs to ask to put it on this list. I think we're dealing three dog over there.
Yeah.
That is all I have this evening.
Hey, council members have questions for the manager? Councilman Tudor?
Hey, Mr. Mayor. It is kind of a general question about the location for the library. About how big is it compared to, is it half the size of the current libraries?
A quarter, I'd say.
Quarter?
It's, Brad is holding on point seven percent.
Twenty-five.
About a quarter.
Well, it's two five on seven.
So this kind of, as my people generally say, I was curious, is there more of those things where people can just be quite spoken and then like oldest of origin, right, kind of thing? It's curious.
Yeah. So if I can add to that. So service is not going to be there to martyr some cleanup. We imagine it's going to take about thirty days to be able to have that building ready for service. But we will come back and do a really good job informing, informing people when this is going to be open, what service is going to be available, how do we do that? And so I will, tomorrow morning, we will put this on our website and Facebook page announcing where this is going to be. But we just got the agreement twenty-five minutes ago. Sorry. So. Thank you.
All right. The Councilman Alcántara?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Murcy, I'm sure this can wait two weeks, but a curiosity is killing me. So how many months of a contract did we sign? And what's the cost per month? Do you have twenty, now it's been thirty-five minutes. Do you have any one of those questions?
So so it is, I believe it's one year with a month and month after that. It is, for open fingers, on how many thousand a month? Six thousand a month. Okay. I wish it's point six, but we still, we got a good deal at six thousand. Okay. Thank you.
Any, anyone else? Okay. Next is my report, which, if the manager's doing a really good job, it takes all the thunder. So I don't really have anything extra to add to that.
I apologize, Mayor.
That's, oh, that's quite all right. Although kind of between my report and his, in the packet, there's a copy of the structural observation report.
Wow.
So for the public or 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 council members, it might seem don't go much. It's in there for interesting reading. Okay, city clerk's report.
I do not have a formal report, but I'm happy to respond to questions.
Okay, is there any questions?
No, no question for the city clerk, but just a question for the answer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Actually, more kudos than questions, but just my normal monthly, thank you for giving us this information ahead of time, and appreciate your written reports. And also, just, I know it's part of the consent agenda, but I just want to thank Scott Work and Stacia Joyce for their willingness to serve on the Airport Advisory Commission. Because it's amazing to find people with the credentials that they do have and impressive resumes that they have that are willing to serve. So I appreciate that, and thank you for your written report.
Thanks, yeah, I've been learning how fun it is to do a written report every couple of weeks. And again, was there any questions for the clerk? Because I forgot to ask her questions for me. All right, and the city attorney is on vacation, so we'll just skip that. And next is audience participation. And I have something to read here. So council meeting rules protect your right to testify and be heard, even if others in the room disagree with you. Council meeting rules also ensure that those attending can express their views as long as they do not interfere with the rights of others to see and hear and perceive. And I want to remind people, we want really things to be done decently and in order. And and of course, the views and opinions expressed there are just, as you do not necessarily reflect those of the council. But we will open audience participation. And first is Sherry Carrington.
Yes, I'm related to this is my wife. But as we sounded at last meeting, wives are allowed to have opinions and express the opponent.
He already knew that, but so, yes, I am his, his wife. And and this is my own, me coming up here for myself, though. I did want to thank the the council and the city for providing a place for the Community Resource Day. As Polly Beth said, it was really a good day for people to get to know some of the different agencies and organizations that are reaching out to some of our community that struggles more. I really appreciate all that Polly Beth Odom did. It was good to see different council people there and other city members there and leaders. I know Lee Hendrickson, she was there and connecting with. I know Lee Hendrickson, she was there and connecting with the different groups, giving them opportunities to sign up to be on the radio. I know that Councilman Alcantara organized the best chili in town to be fed to all of us. It was really good. I went for seconds and they cut me off at certain, no, they didn't. And so I just really did appreciate you guys offering the deep hope for that event. And we hope to do it again. I think, yeah, we do hope to do it again. And I had wanted to come and say this, but then there was something that happened last week that I wanted to, to come in. So we, Steve and I are part of this nonprofit and we, one of our, our programs, we're in the end of the city on the end of Arctic Alaska Way near Arctic Avenue. And so we, one of the things that we offer is the locker, which we give away toilet paper and toothbrushes and toothpaste and those that might be struggling, like the food bay because with the food, we provide personal needs and householdings. So we do end up with some of our regulars that are homeless. And there's one particular gentleman who comes in several times a week. We also offer vouchers for showers and laundry at the Iditarash, which is really nice. They have such a nice place. And they work with us really well. And so he comes in and he gets his coffee and sometimes oatmeal and granola bars that we have in our little box near the door. And the other day he came in and he had this bright yellow jacket on, which was new. He had noticed that and, and my staff was like, you know, hey, you got a new jacket. And he was like, yeah. He said, he mentioned that the, the city of Palmer, the police had told him that it was for him, that someone had donated it and they actually gave him a ride to the police station to pick it up. I think they took a picture with, with a person who donated, which was just a citizen who, because he, his, he camps, because he was told by the city police he couldn't camp in town. He's been here for almost a year, I guess. And he, so he walks up the highway up toward, toward Sutton and he has a camp up there and he walks that highway a couple of times on downtown. Anyway, he's hard to see. A civilian saw him, gave the coat and the police gave him, gave it to him. And I love being a part of the city that is generous and allows dignity and respect to people that are struggling and people maybe that are different. And, and so I won't take any more time because I'll get in trouble. No. Thank you.
Yes, I forgot my normal spiel that says that you have three minutes for audience participation. It's not my fault. Next, Jackie Gelford.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Jackie Ivy Gelford. I want you to know that for several months, starting in 2021, I spent lots of time speaking here about ethics and integrity. And what I said was ethics and integrity matter. Ethics and integrity matter. It matters to me and it matters to the people of Palmer. And then I spent several months out with every petition holder, walking the streets and talking to Palmer voters and finding out that yes, ethics and integrity matter. They do. And once they're destroyed, it's very difficult to bring it back. You know, I used to respect and revere and venerate people who were in charge, librarians, museum directors, politicians, mayors, assembly members. I did. Now, I don't. I'm sorry. Once they masked my granddaughter in Anchorage and they wouldn't listen, they wouldn't listen when I was reading the science. You know, I spent 37 minutes on a phone call getting blasted by the DJ of Kwell. And he called me everything that had moron and idiot and, and everything started with effing, by the way. And I just, and he, but he had absolutely no argument. So we all know now that masks are dangerous, right? We all know that. We all know that the six feet thing was ridiculous. We all know that locking us was based on China. We all know that all of this was based on lies. But now we might find out that the museum, I can't trust the museum, the staff lied. They lied. They tried to change history. How can you trust these people with artifacts when they're lying about what the history is? And then I find out that the library's been distributing porn. They may not have known it, so I'm trying to find out why it's in there and who got it in there and who bought it. And all I get is answers back that say, no, no record, there's no record, there's no record. No one knows how it got there. Okay, fine. And the school district, they were pushing, men can go in women's bathrooms and women can go in men's bathrooms. And I have news for you. There is no way a male can be a female and there's no way a female can be a male. If you put 200, if you put 100 men and 100 women on a deserted island that has everything you need for life, 100 years from now, you will have a thriving community with lots of children and grownups. If you put 100 trans women on an island with 100 men, in 100 years, you'll have 100 male skeletons. That is science. So these people who say trust the science, they're not on the science. It's all a lie. So I'm sorry. I don't care what people think of me anymore. I don't. I know I'm considered mean. I know people mock me. I know they hate me. I know I'm considered confrontational. I don't care because the line was drawn and I am going to hold it. Why? I researched the science. I read all I could. I have a daughter who has a master's degree in librarian science. I know what it requires to be a museum director. It requires a degree of some kind and yet the lady that's in there doesn't even have one. But you know what my daughter said to me when I tried to tell her about this? She said, leave the research to the experts, mom, and just write romance. Now, now, I know everybody doesn't like me. I know I'm very confrontational. It's not going to stop me, okay? It's not. It took me 22 years to get published. I don't quit. Thank you.
Rosalynn Simmons?
Most of you here already know me. No, I'm just kidding. I know you guys don't know me. My name is Rosalynn Simmons. I am the interim pastor at Shiloh Missionary Baptist Church of Palmer, just up the roadway here. And so I came in tonight really because we always hear the word diversity, but it's not always attached fully to the word inclusion. So after a while of being here in Matsu Valley here in Palmer, I realized that there is no connection and we've, we are celebrating like 40 plus years of being in this area and there's no connection with the city of Palmer, so Palmer. So I find that a little curious and troubling. I did have the opportunity to sit with Mr. Moosie, but regretfully it was during the whole George Floyd thing, which is not really a bonus, you know what I mean, for what the situation circumstance was. So what I would say is that what we were doing, trying to become a part of the community, to have a face in the community, but we still did not connect in the community. But we did make our presence known during the height of COVID and sorry, man, we gave out masks. I'm a nurse at the hospital. And so going home, being safe with my children and family, I was very careful about what I inhale. So I thought the same of this community and the people. And so everybody that we could reach within the Alaska Baptist Churches in the Lower Forty-Eight who would send us materials, we sat outside in the parking lot, anybody came by, it was simply a greeting, have what you need, hand sanitizers and things like that. That being said, I'm here tonight to see all of your faces, to become acquainted with more than written letters on a page and to find out how that our church people body may become a part of this community, live and thriving and moving forward in relationship. Blessings to you all.
Thank you.
You are welcome.
Thank you very much. Eric Anderson?
Hello, my name is Eric Anderson from Palmer. I missed the last couple of meetings and I missed specifically the one where we talked about the library's roof caving in. I was driving around town Sunday and I noticed quite a few areas around town where the snow still hasn't been cleared from sidewalks. And I'm not here to say, hey, you guys are doing a terrible job on anything on the sidewalks. But two things caught me by surprise. The entryway over the MTA Event Center is a city-owned building. We're responsible to clear that roof. That, that is, it's an accident waiting to happen. That's crazy. Also, the, the schools, I know the Matsu Middle School, and I checked the closest one to us at Swanson and Sheridan, I think it's Swanson. They have flat roofs on them and where the parapet wall meets the flat roof, there's massive snow drifting there. And the borough is in charge of those. But my question or, or advice would be maybe a letter from the city or maybe our city inspectors have gone around and checked them, but maybe they need to get the borough up there to do the work. I would never send my kids into those two places. The MTA, MTA Event Center, the roof's clear. It's just the entryway drifts over really bad. And it is, it is dangerous there. It's covering some of the air intakes. But I guess when I'm, I'm talking about this stuff, sidewalks, roof, snow loads, it's public safety and the city is on the hook for certain things of public safety. Making sure your kids are in safe environments, making sure the public is safe in public buildings. We don't want to have loss of life, we don't have loss of property even. But put yourself in a position of someone of a less capable physical condition than you and try to navigate some of these sidewalks around town. For some of us able-bodied people, it's almost impossible. Now, put a guy in a wheelchair or a person with a visual disability that maybe has to use a cane or, or feel around to, to get around, it, it's a nightmare. And we buy equipment to do this. I think what we have right now is a shortage of people to run the equipment. So there's some kind of disconnect between our efficiencies on how we remove snow around town, but also our proactiveness on making it better. Because there's still streets around town that are one-lane streets that are drifted over from the last windstorm. It wasn't from snow. But if we have the continuing windstorm issues and events, we should have a continual crew to clean them up, not just people that come to work at seven in the morning and leave at 4:30. I understand there's on-call people, but we have to have the emergency on-call, which is there all the time, not just to avoid overtimes. It's, it's a public's property, I guess, so we all own it. But I'd hate to have to get my friends and family up there to clear the roof on at school just so my kids can go to school. I mean, that's, that's not right. So we can do better and thank you.
All right, that's the end of my list, but there's a couple slots open if anyone wants to, I think I might come sign the form here so you can talk. Or I'll retweet.
What's that?
I'll retweet.
Okay, thank you very much for doing that. The mayor, mayor is willing to spell my name, so that is. Mike Kulewski here, and I'm a resident here for downtown Palmer, 325 East Fireway. I'd like to talk a little bit about what's happening that you may not be aware. If you look carefully over there, you'll see that there's a stand with a, with a camera on it. There is another one right here and there's one back there. We have some cameras at our studio and I, I thought we would play with that just to see what we could do to provide maybe a, a better experience with video. And so what I'm, I'm doing right now is streaming your video. So that is going out there. Started a little late for whatever reason, but it's, it's streaming and the audio is going. But when we finish up today, what I will do is I'll take what I've recorded from the video from those three cameras and I'll put it up also so you'll have an opportunity to look at it and see if, if it really makes a big difference. I think it will because one of the problems with the, the large camera is that you get, you get just this big view. But whoever spoke here, for example, is going to be seen. And of course, the same thing with Mr. Alcantara is going to say something, we, we can see him and, and the rest of that. So I, I hope that will be useful to you, but again, it will be up there later this evening when we finish up. So thank you.
And also at the end of the meeting, we have a second audience participation. And there's a clipboard over there on the side of the sheet. Oh, you have?
I have it.
Can we put it back? We will close audience participation. Next, we have a public hearing. Resolution number 22 dash 005B. The resolution of the Palmer City Council amending the budget for the city of Palmer Alaska for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022. Should we get a short staff report? That title was almost helpful. Sorry, I pick, I pick the titles a lot. Mr. Manager, can we get a brief, before we go into public hearing, do a brief overview?
Brief, in short. So what this is, this is a action happening this last quarter, you know, such as additional revenue coming in, maybe one line item that spent more than another line item. What we do is we true up all our activity for 2022. And this is a document that does this. And your resolution lays every, every action out. We ended up the year very well. As you heard earlier, for 2021, we had a spot-on audit. And, and I, I truly, we, we are striving our very best to be good stewards with public's money and I, I think it is and I think it will show in there. If there's specific details, of course, there are specific details. I do have our finance director, Gina Davis, to address any of those specifics.
Okay. Let's go ahead and open this public hearing for resolution number 22 dash 005B. Anyone wishing to speak about this resolution, please go forward. Nobody's rushing forward. Okay. We will close the public hearing. What are the wishes of the council for this resolution, 22 dash 005B?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. So move to second. Is there any questions, questions? Councilman Alcantara?
Just real quickly, I think I'm wrapping my arms around this whole thing, but it appears to me that we had sales tax revenue of about 2.3 million more dollars than we anticipated as, as a lion's share of, of this additional net revenue. I just want to either look at Gina or look at Mr. Moosie to see if I'm following that correctly. Maybe call her up.
Welcome, Gina.
Thank you, Gina.
We hope you're going to stay here.
These are your questions to ask, by the way.
Mr. Mayor, council members, that is correct. We had a pretty conservative budget for sales tax for 2022 and just with, I guess you think factor inflation and just the robust summer that we had with activities and stuff, our sales tax can hire.
Councilman Alcantara?
Yeah, I just pointed out that I don't want to belabor this for any amount of time, but if I'm following this correctly, when you have the current budget, 8.25 million, amendment of 2.3 million, and it's got an amended number of 10,525, shouldn't that amended number be 10,500 or am I missing something?
No, it should be, it was an error on my part. I did catch.
Got eagle eyes, especially when it comes to numbers. Sorry about that. And then the rest of them are exactly what they say, unanticipated, per's relief, unanticipated insurance reimbursement, sub-unanticipated expenditures, but the unanticipated revenue dwarfed standard unanticipated expenditures by, by 3, 3,354,469, correct? Yeah. All right. Well, yee-haw. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, thank you, Councilman Alcantara. Kind of want to point out, I believe this kind of leads to all the investment, you know, we make. I mean, we've put money into flowers. We do an awful lot of things for the, for Christmas season. We are very welcoming to events. And so those practices, I believe, lead to more people coming back and spending their money in our businesses that we get sales tax on. So, you know, it's just not magically happened or our businesses did well, which, which they did, but our activities and stuff encourage that. You know, I think tonight we have a couple of programs that we're asking for a little bit of community money from the city council. Those bring in more, more folks to our town. And, and it's just the part, that's why we want to maintain a reputation. That's why we want to make sure our equipment works, our streets are clean, people are treated well, because there is a fiscal impact to all those nice and good things that we do.
And I just comment, this, this, uh, resolution, this is a normal resolution we do every year. This one's just a little more surprising. And kudos for budgeting conservatively. I'd much rather experience this kind of surprise than the opposite. So, no more questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Gina.
Thank you.
All right. There's no more questions. Um, Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll, please.
Councilmember Ozula?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember El Cantro?
Yes.
Councilmember Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Anzalati?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Uh, next we have action memorandum. Action memorandum number twenty-three dash zero one three, approval to council member grant to Radio Free Palmer, AKA Big Cabbage Radio with staff recognition of fifteen hundred. What's the wishes of the council?
Move to approve, action memorandum twenty-three zero one three.
Second.
Okay. All right. Is there any questions? Is anyone wondering? Staff report? Okay. We're ready to vote. All in it. Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll, please.
Councilmember Anzalati?
Yes.
Councilmember Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember El Cantro?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Ozula?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Action memorandum number twenty-three dash zero one four, approval to council community grant to Forty-Ninth State Street Rogers Association League with staff recognition of twenty-five hundred, any kind of donation. What's the wishes of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Move consecutive. Is there any questions or comments?
I'm going to second.
Okay. Mr. Lucy.
So, um, yes, this is, this is an annual, um, annual event, um, that uses the MTA center. Twenty-five hundred dollars is what, um, it would be if they rented out, um, our facility for, for this event. What they're asking for is don't charge us so we can put on this event. We're recommending this. So the question is, is, well, John and Brad, why couldn't you just say, why couldn't you just let them have it? I think this is important to do it this way. Number one, it publicizes. Number two, we really want to be consistent in services that, that we have. It allows the public process. Not that there's going to be issue with this, but there, you know, there certainly could be with, so that brings it forth, um, in the public. Um, and it also kind of, you know, puts the authority back in the city council. I mean, you're mostly legislative. We also approved the budget in these activities. So for all those reasons, that's why it is here. Um, it essentially is less than twenty-five hundred, the MTA center was going to get. We're trying real hard to keep that in black. Um, but on the other hand, I don't think this event could go forward, um, with the full, full cost of this. This is, um, our, our local folks who've been putting this together and it's really a, a time of fashion for them. And plus two, I think it's the first event we have with no ICE. Is that pretty accurate?
Normally.
Normally. So we're recommending this. We think this is a good thing and, um...
Since you mentioned kind of advertising, uh, what, when is this?
First weekend in May.
First weekend in May. All right.
May, May fourth through the seventh.
Okay.
And that will be the same time as we have the Great Aviation Gathering, which is the Fairgrounds and, um, our airport, which is also nice because you can go from one event to the other and really kind of draws a bigger crowd, more activity in town. And having that closer to town means more people come through our town, go to restaurants, spend some money, um, get coffee with ice cream in and stuff like that.
All right. Helfman El Cantro.
Uh, just a quick question. Uh, Mr. Lucy, I, oh, yes, um, that would make a, any kind of contribution like this, folks from Palmer, Hugh, Lazy Mountain, Wasilla, Talkeetna, wherever they may be, attend this event for free? That is a free event?
This, this is, this is a free event, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Ozula?
Yes.
Councilmember El Cantro?
Yes.
Councilmember Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Anzalati?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Action memorandum number twenty-three dash zero one five, authorize city manager to negotiate and execute contract with Green Garden Services for seasonal gardening horticulture services in an amount not to exceed forty-eight thousand five hundred forty. What's the wishes of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Move consecutive. Um, we want a little bit of a staff report?
Yes, please.
Okay. Call in Mr. Hanson to come forward.
Yeah.
As far as questions, um, let's see. Is this amount budgeted?
Yes.
How much have we spent over the last year or so?
What was the question?
Is this amount budgeted and how much have you spent over the last year?
Uh, yeah, it is budgeted and last year was like forty-six one. So it's about three percent increase from the original contract. Pressing the news other.
Uh, does the council have any specific questions they want to ask? Councilman Tudor?
It's kind of a, a general question. I'm surprised we're late. So how many?
Your batteries are dead.
Or your turn to call. Okay. Move the microphone.
So, uh, I would like, so do we only have two companies that, that have the health proposal or does it start somewhere?
Yeah, we, um, advertise it for like, uh, twice in the newspaper. We advertise it on our website for about, uh, three weeks and we had two responders and that's pretty typical. I think last time when they did it, we had fourteen. I think it was two responders as well. Um, you know, it's not a huge contract. It's a lot of work and so I don't know if it's real popular to bid on something like that. A lot of work and not much money.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? All right. Um, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Anzalati?
Yes.
Councilmember Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember El Cantro?
Yes.
Councilmember Ozula?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So no unfinished business, no new business. Record of items placed on the table.
That would be, uh, city projects priority documented from the manager and did you want to note the panel where he's excused, uh, Mr. Bass as well? Did you want to note that here?
Okay. Um, as far as the people not making it to the meeting, does this panel call in ahead of time to be excused or the council does, would be unexcused? Yeah. Anyone want to challenge that? Okay. All right. And next is audience participation. Um, well, with audience participation, we have Jackie go for it. I remind her that it's three minutes.
Mayor, city council, thank you again for the opportunity to speak today. You know, um, on January sixth of twenty twenty-one, uh, my Twitter account was completely suspended and I was censored, uh, because I forwarded President Trump's speech where he said peaceful, peaceful protest down to the Capitol building, which everyone knows now is true. And, uh, Twitter would not let me back on. They won't let me back on enough to cancel my Twitter account because I'm an insurrectionist. Well, I'm used to being censored, but I want you to know that two weeks ago, when the Big Cabbage Radio was here for our meeting, uh, I have somebody actually listening to it now and I will give you what they say. Uh, there were three separate videos from last week. One is fifteen minutes, one is four minutes, and one is two minutes long. They show nothing and there's no audio. That is two weeks ago from Big Cabbage Radio. So I don't know what is happening or I, I understand we're, we're, uh, giving him more money for his contract, but I want you to know, uh, today, there's no sound and we're being buffered. I was buffered. Uh, Brad, Brad, just, uh, his speech, they heard nothing. So I just want you to know that, um, uh, the Big Cabbage Radio needs to be just up his game just a little bit because I'm used to being censored. That's why I had the politik here, because that entire thing is available online, because I knew that would happen and that's why I said to him, don't cancel me out, because I'm used to it. I don't say things that people want to hear, because that's the problem with tourism. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a new person.
Thank you. That's me.
Okay.
I, I missed out five of the letters. Thank you.
One second, wait.
Did you want to?
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Um, Eric Anderson then.
Hello. Uh, my name is Eric Anderson. Thank you for the format too, uh, and thank you for the opportunity to speak, not only once, but twice. It's, it's actually very, very, uh, fulfilling to be able to do that. Uh, there's a couple of things. Uh, it's kind of my opinion now, of course, but it really itches at the scar I have about not wanting to hook up Cedar Park over city water and sewer. And now we're pumping it to Wasilla and all the way across the valley. And, um, I'm never going to let you live that one down, John. Uh, and the only reason is it's a, it's a revenue stream. We're looking at revenue streams everywhere now, right? Two, two and a half million dollars worth of taxes. We'll take it, but we can create more revenue than other than taxes. Um, one of the things is, is, uh, I think the city just, uh, agreed to sign on with the borough to support the, the, again, connect Chris, connect crossing project or development proposal idea, whatever they got moving forward there. However, I haven't seen anything moving forward with our wastewater treatment plant possibly, except inception, there being upgraded to do that, to recover some revenue stream and create revenue. Um, I also haven't seen anywhere in the city of Palmer, one recycling bin from the Valley Recycling Center. If we want people to recycle and take care of our community, we need to have options for them, not to drive there on a Saturday, get in line for three hours and throw away some bottles. Um, there should, we should have a partnership with the city, whether it's a nonprofit, maybe it's a volunteer with some, um, tax incentives, breaks or something that can, can handle this to give us a couple of collection sites around town. Um, it, it's basic infrastructure. And now lastly, insurance. He said he waiting on insurance for the library. And he might be waiting a while. I, I hope you, you're not waiting a while, but insurance seems to be slow. We're also waiting on a project from the airport from last winter's storm that is still in insurance negotiations, but, um, they're going to be slow, but valuation of our assets, I guess. Maybe we need to have another audit of our assets and get fair market value on the insurance premiums because I don't think we're going to get back on our insurance premiums, what we've, um, fished or farmed out our insurance for. Uh, for example, the, the water tank on Bailey Hill, I think we value that at like a five thousand dollar value, asset valuation. If an earthquake tips that thing over or ruptures a line, good luck for fixing that at five grand. That's my point is on our public infrastructure, obviously disposables and, and depreciables are different, but in infrastructure like this, you don't expect it to depreciate over the next thirty years. So, um, in emergencies, we need to be able to recoup our costs through insurance.
That's the list so far. Is there anyone else that wants to have audience participation? I think we've spoken to them twice.
Yep. Mike Malewski back again. Of... We've been working to ensure that you have a video, uh, that is accessible, uh, and archived for a long time. Back in the day, uh, we had our own equipment here and did it and it worked pretty well. But with the advent of the new equipment, things also seem to work pretty well for a while. And I, I have made a number of efforts to work with the clerks often, have been very helpful in this regard, to ensure that, um, it is consistently up, runs, et cetera. As Mr. Tudor knows and perhaps some of the others, uh, there were a lot of moving, literally moving parts with this. And part of it has to do with the internet connections and so on. So what I'm running right now is, as I pointed out earlier, is a recording of a system that I will be putting up that will give you the full video. And for whatever reason, the video stream that we normally use out of the little black box in the corner was delayed and starting. You know, no control of it. It started and it's running and it's going, but it's not been very good. And that's the reason why we put considerable effort and a couple of people working to figure out a way to say, okay, how can we make this happen? I might also add that there's been a lot of work done to improve the audio. And today's audio, I think, was very good, but significantly better than the last meeting we had where there were some problems. Now, we have consistently provided, uh, the audio recording of the meetings. So today, for example, a couple of people checked and said, yes, they're listening to it and it worked quite well. And it's complete. And those archived audios, uh, screens are up there, you know, going back five years, whatever. They can be easily reached and done. So I just want to say that we're committed to this process, uh, and I think we're pretty much there. I didn't want to stream the new version yet until I made sure that it was working properly. And I believe it is, so, uh, next meeting, that should be the case. In regard to the early action you take, I'm on a, uh, I want to thank you because once you get older, repairs begin to be more necessary. And that's where our situation is. We're into our eleventh, twelfth, fifteenth year, depending upon how you look at it. Uh, and some of the original work that we did for backup generation has finally shown its age. And that's why we're replacing all of this so that we can be available in emergency situations. And there've been a lot of contributors to that. As I noted in the materials I sent, MEA contributed five thousand dollars. And that's specific to that generator. Uh, so I want to thank you again and, uh, I look forward to the next meeting.
Anyone else want to jump in for audience participation?
Hi, I'm Susan Pauder. I just wanted to come mostly, um, I was concerned that our, uh, city-employed, uh, Palmer librarian might be maligned again and called names. Um, and I was also very concerned that a, um, a group of Palmeranians or, uh, Palmer, um, people who live in Palmer was also going to be compared again to Black Lives Matter and some radical group when they are just a group of, uh, people who support libraries and reading. Um, so really that's why I came, just to, uh, stick up for, uh, City of Palmer Library and hope that, um, the Palmer City Council, uh, still considers the Palmer Library a, an important piece of Palmer and, uh, will move forward with supporting the Palmer City Library in, um, its continuing efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We'll close audience participation. There's no executive session. Councilmember comments? Councilman Tudor, you have any comments?
Yeah, I think there's more here. I'll get this short enough because I'm trying to do a world suite record in the best city council meeting, but it's going to be a lot of the same thing. But, uh, just want to say thank you to, uh, to Scott and Stacy Joyce for, sorry, Scott, for Nancy Stacy Joyce for, uh, volunteering beyond the airport committee. That's super important. And I just wanted to encourage anyone who might be listening or watching, if you want to make a difference in Palmer, that's a really great initiative, volunteering for, uh, committee. We have a lot of different commissions that you help. That makes a huge difference. And, uh, also just want to say thank you to Colleen for coming in and talking to us. She's really in the front lines of a lot of this effort, uh, dealing with, with, uh, that you're seeing that that and she's definitely a part of the solution for the organization. So definitely, I'd say thank you for that and also for, uh, the cavalry. Thank you for, for getting these meetings. I really appreciate it.
Councilmember Ozula?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just want to thank you everybody for coming out tonight and, uh, saying your piece. It's really important, um, when you guys come out and share your, your thoughts so that, um, we have some idea about what the people want that who are represented. So... have to make up to that. I was able to go to the Chamber of Commerce luncheon on Wednesday and hear about the Arctic winter, and I was also back for the passport thing, so I'm excited about that, to realize what a big deal that is, so that's exciting. And then I also wanted to thank Rabbi Greenberg, and also Mrs. Simmons for coming out and representing faith in our community. So thank you.
Last but not least, Councilman Elcantro?
Well, I'll let you go last, Mr. Mayor, but thank you. Doodle to everything that Councilman Anzaladi just said. Appreciate the folks that were here tonight, the presentations, and appreciate the folks that participate in audience participation. I want to thank Gina and Brad for being here tonight as well, to kind of help our city manager out. And as the regulars here know, and most people know, I have a much better face for radio than I do TV. And I didn't know at all that we were on television, so now you can only imagine Mr. Mayor how verbose I might become now, if I know there's going to be a camera on me, instead of just a microphone. So other than that, kudos to the budgeting process, and it feels good to be in a better budget situation, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into that. And I know we didn't quite beat the speed record, but I don't think the mayor's going to keep it here too much longer. Thank you.
Thank you. You're making me want to have a cutoff switch, you know? So that's the end of our meeting. I made a comment to one citizen that said, "You have to be careful." Back in the early 90s, I got involved with the Maxine Borough Library Board, and then I gave that up and got involved with the city. Where are you? 711.